At the time being 6:00 p.m. on Tuesday, June 11th, 2024, I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order and ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As a reminder, this meeting is being recorded both audio and video and will be posted on the district website. The first item on the agenda is the approval or discussion and approval of the minutes from the May 28 meeting. Is there any discussion around those minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve them.
No move.
There's a motion and a second. Would you please pull the committee?
Brad Mottler?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. And the next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Good evening, Mrs. Perangeli.
Good evening. Welcome. It's our last official meeting in June. The school year will be ending in a couple of days, so we're excited to get through the end of the year. I'd like to start out by having a personnel update. We're excited to say that we're starting to see applications and filling positions that have been difficult to fill in the past. So that's a good sign for us. We'd like to welcome Mark Leonard. He is an ELL teacher, and in the notes it says Park Ave. That is incorrect. It should say Bartlett High School. So he will be joining Bartlett High School in the fall. We also have Ms. Tori Hendra. She is a speech and language pathologist at Park Ave. Tori actually worked in our district years ago. She was going back to school and received her degree and is coming back and excited to work in Webster. So we welcome her back. We've had a few resignations come up. We have Jen Carey, guidance counselor at Webster Middle School. She's going to be a guidance counselor in a hometown where her kids go to school. So congratulations to Jen. We've also had a resignation of our bilingual para at Park Ave, Ms. Carla Maldonado. We also have a resignation from Ms. Madison Sullivan. She is a kindergarten teacher at Park Ave. And then Ms. Megan Strazala. She is a grade three teacher at Park Ave. I wish them all the best. We have a retiree announcement, Ms. Carol Daly. She is a grade three teacher at Park Ave. She will be retiring, I believe her date is September 5th, I think. So she will be here for a few days at the start of school, and then she will be joining the retirees that we have in the district. So congratulations to her. And then I'm also happy to announce that Ms. Puleyafico and her team have hired a new assistant principal for Park Avenue. That would be Keith Goodyear. Keith was a special education team chair at Park Ave and will now be moving into the role of assistant principal. Keith has a nice, strong special education background, which is needed in our district. In addition to that, he has early elementary experience. So we look forward to having him in that role. I'm sure he'll be a great addition to the team. Are there any questions about personnel?
Through the chair.
Yes.
I'm just curious at the moment, how many unfilled positions do we have throughout the system?
I don't know off the top of my head. I would say that some of the empty positions we had are filled. So as you know, we did some reduction in forces. Happy to say that all of those positions that were reduced have been able to move into other positions, so we're not losing any staff. So that's a positive for us. At the high school, I know we currently have one math vacancy and a science vacancy. And then I believe we have a special, no, we don't have a specialized vacancy. We filled the L position, which has been challenging to do. So I think we only have two. A big spot that we're trying to fill positions is some of those paraprofessional positions across the district. Those still are struggling. I'm not sure what we have at the middle school, at the elementary school to fill as far as vacancies. I think we're in pretty good shape.
Yeah, for IAs and ABAs, a couple, couple .4 positions for the preschool that have remained unfilled. Hard to fill a .4 position. For the most part, we've been very fortunate to have lots of college kids coming and supporting in substitute roles during this time of the year. So, but we do have a couple IA and ABA positions remaining unfilled.
We will be going through and updating that list as we go through this month and making sure we're filling that. So I'll bring that to the committee next time so you can see a full list of vacant positions and what we have for movement in the district. So you're aware. Because I don't think we have that many at Webster Middle School either. We just filled, we had a vacant L position, which we just signed today. So I'm happy that position is filled. There was a vacant sped position, but that is being filled through the reduction in force. So most of the positions, I think, we are on board. We're getting there. So let's hope we can keep them. And one of our goals is to, you know, retain as many staff as possible. So consistency across the district.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Okay, next on the list, we have a few people here tonight. And it's something that we started to do here at school committee is recognize our retirees from the Webster Public School Department. We have four on the list tonight, two couldn't make it. So I'll talk a little bit about them first, just to acknowledge them and thank them for their hard work. The first is Ms. Anne Jackard. Ms. Anne Jackard is a speech language assistant. She was hired back in August 28, 1995, and spent her 29 years as a speech therapy assistant. She was hired by Mr. Neil O'Donohue. That's a name from the past. I know, I knew you would know it, Linda. I recognized it right away. She was hired to do speech assistant at the high school. If you remember back in the day, we used to have preschool also at the high school. So she did some part-time high school students and worked in the preschool. And she did that until she was moved over to Park Avenue with the preschool program and has been there ever since. So 29 years in a district doing speech therapy assistant. I think she has certainly earned her time and earned her right to retire. And I would like to thank her for all the lives she touched, all the students she helped. You don't hear a lot of that anymore, spending a career, you know, 20-plus years in one place. So it's quite an accomplishment, and it's something that we appreciate and we celebrate here in Webster. So I want to wish Anne the best of luck. I've seen her a couple times. I'm sure none of our retirees are counting down the days, but she's excited to get into her new chapter. And I'm already working on her to come back and fill in when she can. And she didn't say no, so I'm happy about that. Next, we have Mr. Sean Harrington. Mr. Sean Harrington was hired August 31, 1992 by Dr. Dacchioli. So I know you know that name also. Mr. Harrington spent 32 years with the Webster Public School Department. He was a long-term substitute for Mr. James Moore at Bartlett High School. And then he was officially hired in 1992-93 school year as a .4 art teacher at Webster Middle School. During his time at Webster Middle School, Mr. Harrington expanded the curriculum to include ceramics, art history, a multicultural art festival, and art club. In 2000, Mr. Harrington requested to transfer to Bartlett High School, where he was approved for that transfer. He then became full-time. Mr. Harrington ran the art club for a number of years and was an inspiration for many of his students. In addition, Mr. Harrington was an advocate for his program by applying for many grants over the years to support field trips and advancement in his program. But not only was he an advocate for his program, he was also an advocate for our community. As you know, Mr. Harrington ran empty bowls for a number of years and donated all of his proceeds to the Webster Dudley Food Share. He has gone above and beyond to support his program in many ways and has been nothing but a professional at his time here at the high school. He has written, and there's one in the agenda tonight. It's the Janet Molsner Grant that he has written for a number of years, applying to bring additional items to his program, whether it's computers for his digital art programs, trips, field trips for his kids to go into New York to experience museums and art out in there. He has just been such an advocate for the students in his program, and he is very proud of what he built over the years. So I wish him, nothing, again, 32 years in one place is quite the accomplishment. And I wish him nothing but the best. And hopefully, he'll also be willing to come back at some point and it's time to visit us and maybe fill in a day here and there. But I wish him the best in his retirement for his future. So thank you to Mr. Harrington. And then tonight, we have Ms. Annie Thompson here, who we're very excited to have. I told Annie yesterday, it feels like she's been here a few years, but it feels like I've known her for a very long time. She's that kind of person, somebody that you just immediately get to know, respect, and fall in love with. Ms. Thompson was hired in January of 2021 to be the interim dean of students at Park Avenue Elementary. And then she became the interim assistant principal in September of 2022, before becoming the assistant principal in February of '23. Ms. Thompson has been a welcome addition to the staff at Park Ave. She's known for her work ethic and her kind heart. Although Ms. Thompson has only been here a few years, it feels like this is her home. She belongs here, and she's found a place here that she will always be welcome. So I wish you nothing but the best in retirement. I don't know if Ms. Puleyafico or Mrs. Oh or Annie, you would like to say anything?
Well, I just want to wish Annie all the best in her retirement. I think Mo really hit the nail on the head. We've only worked together the last two years, but it has felt like it was just such a smooth transition to work with Annie. She was welcoming and informative and helpful when I came on and has just been a really great work partner. So I can't thank her enough for her help and her leadership. People really find her somebody, a confidant that they can go to, an open door, somebody that they trust. And, you know, I think that's really important in administration, in work between staff and administration. And Annie has really been that for everybody at Park Ave. So I thank her for her years of service to Park Ave and to me and to the staff and families and students.
And it's also important to note that Annie is not only in education. You've been in education for how long? 33 years Annie has been in education, but she is also a licensed nurse. So we have maybe had a couple conversations about her coming back and filling in, because those sub-nurse positions are hard to find. So that's a way she can get her foot back into the door, visit the kids and see the staff and keep her involved in the school system. I know she's not going to be bored. She has a grandchild now. And she'll be already moving into another role that she wants to be in part-time, but enjoying life a little bit, I think. So thank you for all you've done for our kids. It's been a pleasure to have you, and it truly has felt like I've known you for a long time. And then, last but not least, she's typing away, so she's got to get all of this in her notes. We have Lori Marazo. This is officially Lori's last meeting that she'll be doing as a school committee recording secretary. Lori, as I talked about a little bit, has been here 13 years. I remember the day she walked in the door for her interview with Greg Chiardi, Dr. Chiardi upstairs. She had her binders, she was organized. And right then, we knew she was the person for the job. And she has come in, and I've said it before, I'm going to say it again. She has been nothing but a professional, welcoming staff in that office. When you come to the superintendents or any of our buildings, the first face you see is usually Lori or somebody assisting our families, or in the schools it might be the admin assistant, assistant families. And she has handled them with kindness and caring, even when they come in sometimes a little hot, because that's what happens. She manages to calm them and make them feel welcome and supported. Any new families that come in, any new staff that come in, she guides them through the process, she onboards them. She manages all the school committee stuff. She has seamlessly transitioned us as a district through five superintendents. And you wouldn't know it, in 13 years, that's a short amount of time to transition through five people, five staff. And it just goes a lot to show how she manages herself and how flexible and adaptable she is in everything she does. So, you know, when she came on board, we were, we transitioned in that office a couple of times, and she was kind of thrown in. She didn't have that support system in place already. It was me, a flight below, trying to help her out, to say, this is what you need to do, or this is how we can do it. Or sometimes it'd be like, I don't know, we got to figure that one out, and she just figured it out. So I just want to say thank you. I've had the pleasure of working with you, and you are very much appreciated and respected in this office and for everybody. So we will miss you. And, you know, I know you have been known to volunteer in a classroom or two and sob a little bit also. So, you know, it's open to everybody. But I just think if you look at the number of years we have on our sheet and the dedication that we have from some people in this district, it speaks volumes, and it should be recognized and it should be appreciated and supported. And I just want to say thank you so much for everything. You are very much appreciated. And we do have a little bit, something, we're trying a little something new. We started a new little tradition. We have our plaque out in the hallway. We did that, so now we have our retirees. All of their names have been added. And instead of doing, you know, our typical plant that we do, trying to make up little gift baskets now that, we'll have some, well, if you're anything like me, you'll have some of the last. All very much.
Yes, through the chair. I would just like to say, I've been through three different positions, knowing Lori and as teacher and union president and school committee. And you have, I don't know how, but you have always been pleasant and helpful to everything and answering any questions and being willing to help in any way. And I hope you enjoy your retirement immensely.
I know, you've given me confidence. It's a great app.
I too would like to thank you, Lori, for all of the support you've given me and the rest of the committee over the years. You've been a constant for us and somebody that even mid-meeting I can look to for guidance on whether we need a vote or a motion. Yep, exactly. So much appreciated and all the work that you do behind the scenes. I know that the meeting is a culmination of the work that begins on a Wednesday and carries through for a week and a half before that next meeting. So much appreciated. And Annie Thompson, I can't thank you enough for all of the things that you've done. You know, I know that I've interacted with you most as a mom over the years. And, you know, you've been a friendly face for me and my kids and someone that was always there to support us through happy things and challenging things and anything in between. So thank you. And certainly, I don't want to miss the folks that are not here with us in the room, Mr. Harrington and Anne Jackard as well. So a special thank you to them. Do you have something you wanted to add, Ms. Millitt?
I did, through the chair, because I kind of started with Sean, teaching at Sikowski School. And he has done such a, so many tremendous things, especially connecting with the community. I had just talked to him recently, and I said, I have a bowl in every room in my house. At least, I have one in my bedroom for jewelry. There's one in the kitchen, there's, they're everywhere. But it's such a reminder of not just the students, but the connection with the community and where that money goes to help out. And I hope he continues to come back and be a part of that.
I certainly hope so. I mean, it's, I mean, we're celebrating retirements tonight, and we're celebrating people, which is, I think, a wonderful thing for us to do. But it also makes me think of, you know, where we're at as a district as we go through. And, you know, we're in such a need, and this profession is such a difficult profession, and a lack of people now coming into the profession. It's harder and harder and harder to fill positions and to get people on board. And the demands from the state and the lack of funding that forces us in a time to, when we really need to be onboarding people, we're reducing positions. We're reducing positions that maybe, you know, we need or that bring those extracurricular events and activities to our students. So, I mean, I think, you know, statewide, we have a bigger problem. It's frustrating. I'm happy we can celebrate the people, but I'm also sometimes get a little frustrated with all the minutia that we have to go through, where we should be onboarding younger people coming in, and there's less and less. So, you know, I just think we need to keep our legislators and keep feet to the fire and keep remembering the need and to support our staff and to thank our staff that are here every day. I mean, it's a lot. There's a, you know, we have a lot of teachers across the district, a lot of paraprofessionals. Everybody here works extremely hard, from our front offices, you know, to our custodians, to our crossing guards, who are here to support our community and support our families. And to be put in difficult positions where we have to, you know, make tough decisions when it's already hard enough to bring people on is, can be frustrating. But it's a happy occasion. I just wanted to vent a little bit, I guess. So thank you for listening. But I congratulate our retirees, and I hope that vacations are in their future, not just work. And I'd love to get a picture of the two of you together, if you don't mind, with your baskets. Smile for retirement. Thank you, congratulations. That'll all be us in about 10 years, right? Oh, and while we're here, I put that over there. I wanted you to, I wanted the school committee to see that. As promised, we had Ms. Kathy Napparata, who served two terms on the school committee. And in recognition of our school committee members, because we know you're probably the highest-paid people in town here. They don't get paid for what they do. But just to appreciate the work that you do to support our school departments also. It takes a team, and you guys are part of that team. So you're appreciated, and we'll continue to do that and find a place here to celebrate our school committee members.
Through the chair.
Ms. Millitt?
I just thought of, looking at that, is there something similar we can do for our school committee student representatives?
That's a good idea.
We could recognize them in that way? That, oh, look.
Well, they were part of the school committee. They were part of the school committee, so I could certainly add their name as a rep. So that's a great idea. I like it, thank you. Okay. Anything else for our retirees before we move on? No? Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, moving on to our instructional leadership update. Our, the district instructional leadership team met on June 5 with our state partners to continue our work on our instructional priority. We're currently working on our vertical alignment strategy, which assigns roles and how we will support our instructional priority. We need to complete, we need to submit a completed instructional priority to the state by the end of the month. So we are in the process of that. We continue to have biology MCAS testing. It's been ongoing. We had three more makeup days, and then we will be complete within the district. And other updates, I am happy to report that the teachers' union approved the MOA that the school committee did at our prior meeting for the ILT positions and the department head positions. So we are posting those as we speak. On Wednesday, May 29, I attended the CMC graduation in Worcester to see one of our students graduate. It was a great night, and I was happy to see our student so proud of her accomplishments. I got a moment to speak with her. Ms. Barris was there, Ms. Hare was there also. And it was a nice ceremony, and they have a lot to be proud of. So we were, congratulations to her. And then on May 31, here, the seniors had their lock-in in the high school cafeteria. We had about 35 students participate, and it was very successful. I wanted to thank our senior advisors, Ms. Bodett and Ms. Doherty, and Mr. Renad and Ms. Neves, and Ms. Kate Lugwid for staying up and supporting our senior class all night. They had all kinds of events. I popped in for a little while and was helping them set up. They had the place decorated, they had games set up, they had a food truck come in, they had a DJ playing. It was an awesome night, and for such a small class, we had more than half of our class participate. So the kids were thrilled and excited, and they get up and they do the sunrise in the morning. So we thank everybody who donated. I believe some of those donations are in there, or if not, they'll be on our next school committee meeting. But tons of donations come in, and people help support that event for our seniors to make it a special night. So I just want to make sure I say thank you. And then I'd like to give our athletic director and our volunteer coaches that showed up to support our Athletic Field Day, which was held on June 3 on the campus of the high school. We had a nice turnout. We had, again, about, I wanted to say about up to 40 kids show up. They had stations set up throughout the fields out there. They run kids through drills, through baseball, through soccer, football, track. I was able to run the track and the relay, and I was reminded today how I got beat. I guess I've lost a few steps in my age, but the little one beat me on the relay race, and he was flaunting it today again. So I'm going to have to work on my skills and get ready for next year. But it was a great turnout, and thank all of them for giving up a Saturday to come out for a couple hours in the morning and do something special and give our kids a taste of what it would be like to play a sport in our district. So we appreciate that. And then on Sunday, June 2, I definitely want to give a shout-out to our boys' baseball team, who won an exciting game in the last inning, which moved them on to our Sweet 16 tournament. On Tuesday, June 4, our high school baseball team traveled to Jamaica Plain to play in the Sweet 16. Although they didn't win, they had a great season, and they gave it a good run. And I am so proud of how they've represented our Webster community. So they haven't gotten that far in a while, and it's only going to be up from here. They, you know, didn't lose many seniors, so they're excited for the future. And it's great to see that participation and involvement and that excitement or pride around your school. So congratulations to them. And then on June 6 was our annual grads, grad parade through the district, which is one of my favorite events of the year. It's always very rewarding to see our students and staff so excited. There is nothing better, and I excited at graduation, than standing and seeing all the kids excited and the young kids excited. And then you look up and you see the staff crying because they are so proud that they've seen these students come through and grow up to the young men and women they are. So it's a wonderful event, and we're just so proud of all of our students. And then, again, on June 6 was our senior awards ceremony. They tried something a little bit different this year. They had a dinner prior to the awards. prior to the awards. So, it was nice. I'd like to thank the hard work of our senior class advisors and Ms. Alexandria Donnelly and the staff that helped support the events. They gave out scholarships and awards to our student. We got to enjoy a nice dinner. So, it was great and we appreciate it and we look forward to next year's. And then I was, as I was writing this, we were preparing for our graduation ceremony, what happened on Friday, June 7th. I'm happy to say that the weather, again, participated for us. It was a beautiful evening. We were able to make it through the ceremony and finish the ceremony by about three minutes when it started to sprinkle out. So, yay, team. We made it. And it was really a nice ceremony. The students, again, just shine so bright and represent us so well. And all the families that show up, I just wish them the best of luck and congratulations on whatever they do. They're doing so many great things. So, I look forward to seeing them in the future. Hopefully, they'll come back and visit us and be participants in our community activities. And I just wish them all congratulations. That's all I have for other events. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Perangeli. The next item on the agenda is our business manager report. Good evening, Mrs. Kontos.
Good evening, everyone. This evening, I'll start with some updates on the Bartlett High School renovation project. Just a few items to point out. You may have noticed when you came in, but if you didn't, on the way out, take a look. You'll see that the granite curbing has started to be installed outside of this area. So, the new configuration of the parking lot for both the central office and then where the preschool will be. So, that work has begun. Some of the other keynotes are some excavation of what we're calling the courtyard or outside classroom by the new cafeteria has started. And then finally, we've really been participating, again, in a lot more color selection activities. We finalized some items for the auditorium, for our wall base moldings, as well as our classroom cabinets and countertops. If any of the committee member wants to see any details at the end of this meeting, I'd be more than happy to show you some of the samples we have here, as well as some of the renderings that are on the boards in front of you. We do a Vanna show tonight, but I'm not sure we have enough time for me to walk around with all the posters, but more than happy to walk you through it if you want to see what it looks like. Moving on to maintenance updates, I do have one item to report for Park Ave. We had a rooftop unit that leaked into one of the classrooms that damaged a few ceiling tiles. It was a bit of a flood at first, but they caught it early in the morning. And Ms. Polyafico was able to address that classroom. We did have some damaged tiles. Those will be replaced over the summer. As it turned out, a PCP pipe had cracked and that impacted the way that the water suctioned and drained off the roof. And that has been resolved. Any questions on that? Okay. Last one is, I want to give you an update on three projects that we have going on. We've actually gone out to bid on these three projects. The three projects are all grant-funded. One of them is partially funded through a town meeting appropriation that we had. So, Webster Middle School is 20 years old and there's two things that we'll be doing at the Webster Middle School. The first is what we're calling some HVAC controller upgrades. There's three different areas that we're looking at. One is adding controllers on the rooftop units that are capable of being managed and maintained remotely. The current ones we have have no network capability. So, anytime the custodians need to make an adjustment to the climate in the building and changes, they got to go up on the rooftop. So, this will enable both remote access for our staff, but in the case of troubleshooting as well, if there's ever an issue, that gives us some added capability. Two other areas that we're focusing in on, one is the boiler room and the other one is all of the controllers that serve every one of the individual classrooms across the entire building. So, by upgrading those, we have failures of like two to three each year and they're continuing to fail at a rapid pace. So, we're looking to get ahead of that and replace them all with this project. And then there's another one, which would be a controller in the boiler room. Obviously, making these kind of upgrades help us manage the climate control in the building, help the heating and cooling run more efficiently and effectively, and all best practices in terms of what we're doing. The second one at Webster Middle School is we're replacing approximately 200 windows, the glass on 200 windows. Those windows are no longer under warranty and the argon glass has leaked out of it. So, that really impacts your thermal layer. And so, we're looking to replace the window in about 100 small ones and 100 large ones. And lastly, excitingly for Park Ave is really modernizing the classrooms with the purchase and installation of interactive smart boards for, you know, in replacement of what they currently have today. That would get them consistent with what we have at Webster Middle School and eventually what we will have at the high school as well. So, we're really excited about those. For future months, I'll be telling you about some other additional things going on across the district, falling out of the approvals at the recent town meeting as well. So, lots of exciting things going on. Any questions?
I just, I just have a quick question through the chair. What's the timeline? Like, if they're going to replace the windows or do any maintenance to the heating or temperature? Is that like a summer project?
So, ideally, it's a summer project, but we have extended it to go to the end of October, just because of the timing on when we went out to bid. However, within those bid documents, it does say that it can't disrupt school activities.
Right.
So, that they would have to work off hours and the evenings were on Saturdays.
And then, just another question, the 60 smart boards, how many classrooms are at Park Ave? Is it for each classroom or is there certain grades?
For all the grade levels of classroom.
And will the-
Small spaces.
Special education. Will special education receive them too?
The sub-separate special education classes will, our rest of our-
The rest of our special education teachers are inclusion, so they are in the classrooms with, with teachers.
Awesome. Any other questions?
Not. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Kontos. And the next item on the agenda is our principal report. Good evening, Ms. Polyafico.
Hello. Good evening. So, I'm just going to give an update on end-of-year events. As I was here last time, there was a very long list and quite a few of them have happened, believe it or not. We still have a couple more coming up in these last few days of school. We held our Jump Into Kindergarten event on May 2nd. We had over 40 students and families. I don't know the exact number, but I do know we filled the bus twice to do our, our bus tour, when the kindergarteners and their families get to ride on the bus. So, and we will also be hosting a Jump Into Kindergarten summer program. So, any students who are already registered for kindergarten can come to a two-week summer program to get acclimated and ready for kindergarten. We've had most of our concerts at this point. We had Grades K and 1 on May 17th. And we had Grades 2 and 3 on May 31st. If you've attended, it's an outdoor concert. Families bring their chairs and students do a variety of singing, hand motions, rhythmic activities and dancing as well. On May 31st, we did honor our third grade student, Omar Sedano Nunez, who died earlier this year. We planted a tree in his honor and will be installing a plaque. So, and the third grade prepared a song for him. His family was in attendance and it was a very nice tribute to him. We had Grade 4 go to the middle school. We've done, we've been able to do a lot of cross-school activities this year, which has been fantastic. So, Grade 4 went to the middle school to see their play, Law and Order: Crime, The Rhyme and Punishment, pun. So, that was fantastic. It was a dress rehearsal for the, for the middle school and fourth grade got to attend, which was fantastic. Our school, school adjustment counselors hosted a Bikes and Boards event, where students can bring their bikes or scooters or skateboards. They get helmets. It's in partnership with the police department and EMS. So, they come and learn about bike safety and parade. They get to decorate their bikes and do a parade, which was fantastic. We had our Someone Special Dance, which our PTO on May 18th, our PTO puts together. We had over 240 students and their individual Someone Special. So, it was a very successful event. It had to be broken into two sessions and both were full. So, dancing, snacks. It was kind of formal. Some families wore their very formal gowns. It was, it was great. We have a picture station where they can get formal pictures taken. It's very nice. We had our Girls on the Run event on June 2nd, which some of us were there. Some of us were sore the next day after the event. And that was at Polar Park. They do a great job. We went out and ran or walked around, around Polar Park in Worcester. So, we will be having Girls on the Run again next year. So, that will be exciting. And our Real Madrid Soccer Program wrapped up this week. We had over 45 students participating in that. They were able to use the field up behind Park Ave. And we also had a visit from Real Madrid leadership. So, they were able to come, see the coaches in action, see the kids in action, meet with Mr. Pronto, Ms. Perangeli, myself, Ms. Kontos, and really get a feel. They were very impressed with the program that, that we're running. So, we will be doing that program again. Again, basketball in the fall and winter and soccer in the spring. Our field days went off wonderfully. We got very lucky with weather. We only had to reschedule one. A big thank you to the Webster Fire Department, who are really always the highlight with the fire hose, spraying the kids, big mud puddles. It was great. We had preschool graduation on June 7th. So, we had our AM graduation in the morning and our PM in the afternoon. Always very good. They performed for the families. And June 7th was our last day of preschool as well. And today was our Grade 4 step-up day to middle school. So, they spent the morning, had lunch at the middle school, were able to meet the teachers, kind of get the feel for next year at the middle school, as our fourth graders become fifth graders. I do want to thank AA Transportation, because a lot of these events where whether middle school, high school comes to us or we go to them, they, they donate the bus transportation between schools, which is huge, to be able to provide that opportunity for our kids to go to the middle school or high school for different events. So, AA has been a really great support in that. Additionally, when our third grade got stuck at Slater Mill on one of their, Slater Museum, on one of their field trips, thunderstorm came in. I got a call from one of the teachers, "What should I do? We're stuck there." I called AA and they had somebody over there to pick up our kids in 15 minutes. She said, "Don't worry about it. We'll get them." And, and they did. So, AA has been really great to us in that regard. We do have some upcoming events. Grade 1 is on their field trip tomorrow to Davis Farmland. Should be hot. Our Grade 4 concert and celebration is tomorrow at 1:00. So, we will be recognizing our Grade 4 students and wishing them well onto middle school. And it is also their concert. We combine them. So, families can get it all in one-stop shopping. And on June 13th, we will have our Grades K to 3 step-up day. We do have our class lists done, so students will be able to meet their teachers before they head out for the summer, which is beneficial for them to, as they head into the summer, to kind of know what to expect coming in, rather than having that anxiety of, "Who's going to be my teacher? Who's going to be in my class?" So, it, it gets a little chaotic as all the kids move around the building, but it's definitely worth it to organize that. That's all I have. Any questions? I know, all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Polyafico. Any questions or comments from the committee?
I just, I just have one. It's, you, it seems like you've done a lot of planning for transitions and that's huge for kids at that level to be, feel prepared and, you know, ready for whatever's to come. Do you have kindergarten screening scheduled?
Yes. Those happen the days before school starts. So, kindergarten starts later.
Right.
And as, as students register, they call the main office and schedule an appointment for screening. Yes.
And do the kindergarten teachers come in early to do that? Or do you have other staff in the summer that?
It's not over the summer. So, the, because, so we start in August. So, and there are three days of screening before kindergarten starts. So, it's still within the work year for the kindergarten teachers.
Perfect.
Any other questions or comments?
I would just like to thank you and your team and all the volunteers, because a lot of this stuff doesn't go off without volunteers. Teacher volunteers their time. We have the PTO. We have parents who volunteer their time. You don't go to an event at Park Ave and not see an administrator there. Many times, you see all three of them there. So, it's a lot of time. Yeah, all four of them. Yes. And it's, you know, it's time away from your family with your second family. And we appreciate that very much. And all the parents who support us throughout the school year and all the staff who just go above and beyond to make sure that our families, our schools, our students are getting, are getting all these extra fun activities that are going on. So, it's very much appreciated.
Agreed. Yeah. Thank you for pointing that out, Mrs. Perangeli. Same here, you know. Park Ave has become a second home for the Siddiqui family over the years with many years of, you know, between the two kids attending. So, it's really bittersweet, probably not only for Ryan, but also for me and the rest of us that love to come to the events. And, you know, it's always lots of familiar faces at every event. So, you guys do a great job. So, thank you. No other questions or comments? Thanks for your updates, Ms. Polyafico. The next item on the agenda under Old Business is a monthly report on fundraising. So, just as a reminder, it is the role of the school committee to review fundraising applications, but we don't approve them. Those are done at the building or district level. So, there's two fundraising applications in the packet here. One is related to the prom and photos being taken. And the other one is for concessions that are going to be happening in the fall. Any questions or comments from the committee about that? Hearing none. The next item on the agenda under New Business is Adult Education End-of-Year Update. Good evening, Ava.
Hello, everyone.
Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you all, too. Can I just say, I'm so inspired. Everybody's doing such really cool stuff. I'm like-
Yourself included, but yes. Lots of good stuff going on.
Pat on the back for me as well, I guess. But, so, I'm very happy to be here. I do want to, I'll move this over. So, June 4th, we actually had a multicultural night. It's the first one that we've had and it was really cool. We had over 10 countries represented. And so, this was a student-driven event. So, we had empanadas. We had papousas. I ate really, really well that night. We had music, all of that. And then we did want the staff to get involved. So, we also represented states, because New Hampshire has culture too, you know? Rhode Island as well. And then one student also did a presentation about her business. She is an esthetician. So, she talked about doing lashes and it was really cool. So, entrepreneurship is something that we encourage. June 6th, we had our graduation and student recognition night. We had seven graduates walk that night. We were really proud of them. We had a student speaker. It was just a lot of good vibes that night. And I also cried, because I'm very proud of them. In terms of measurable, measurable skill gains, so MSG, we're currently in the process of end-of-year testing. But we did have a total of 10 students who obtained their high school equivalency this year. We have one student who is currently attending QCC. And then we also have two students who are going to attend QCC in the fall. One of those students actually entered through the Future Focus Program and they are a partner of ours. So, it's a transitional program for adult education students, so that they can get acclimated to college life. So, we're proud of those students as well. And then one student has entered into a training program. This year, we did have two new, two new programs. We had our self-paced GED class, which is new. So, we're going to still refine that. We're going to continue that into next school year, but with some changes. We also had a summer conversational English class. And then we also had our second year of GED bootc- And then we also had our second year of GED bootcamp. All of these classes, we are gonna continue into the next school year. We're actually one of very few adult education programs that have summer programming. Um, so I encourage everybody to take a little vacation because I feel like it's non-stop throughout the year. Very proud of my staff. Um, mid-year, we were awarded additional funds to hire a full-time ESOL instructor. And so with that, we started daytime classes at Webster Public Library. We also received additional funds for a PD event that our whole staff completed. Um, it was anti-racism, diversity, equity, and inclusion. Um, and so we are going to, or we are using those funds to invest in more professional development on those topics. Our program focus this year was artificial intelligence. So we've done a lot of work around that. So instead of being afraid of it, we want to get ahead of it. We want to be proficient in it, um, because our students also want to be proficient in it. So we want to encourage the ethical use of it. We've had some professional learning circles with that, which is also something new that we piloted. Um, so those are essentially just staff sharing groups. And then I will also be attending an AI or a conference at the end of the month that is focused on artificial intelligence in education. We got our FY25 award, which was $435,000, $451, which is a substantial increase from our base funding from last year, which was a little under $378,000. So yay us. Okay? Very happy about that. Some of that additional funding was due to us exceeding our enrollment target for ESOL. We were over enrolled for the entire year. So that was also nice. And then the additional funds were also to cover our, our new full-time staff member as well as additional funds because I had perfect attendance at a professional development seminar. So they gave us money for that. So that's cool. Um, so we got a lot of money this year and we do plan to use that well. So we are investing in a program math tutor. Um, we piloted that this year and we have actually had a lot of success with that. So we're using a high dosage slash, um, impact tutoring model. And so we've had two students who have passed their high school equivalency in response to this. So that's why we wanted to invest more in that. And in terms of events, that's it. But I do want to highlight two students because I like to brag on my students anytime that I, I get. So one student, um, he was actually our speaker at the GED graduation and he came into our program in September. He received his GED in November and then he enrolled in college in January. And we were just like, what? Right? Perfect student. Um, he spoke at our graduation. He's currently working towards his business degree and we are also trying to get his family members into our program as well. Um, so I kinda just want, wanted to tell you that because these are all individual accomplishments, but they're also community accomplishments and community achievements. So we really believe in family literacy. So when one student, and not only that, we believe in breaking generational curses and trauma and everything. So we want everyone to succeed in families. Um, and then another student, she's an ESOL student. She came to us two years ago. She could speak Haitian Creole, French, Spanish, and Portuguese. She just couldn't speak English, right? And so she came to us as a beginner. After one year, she got into our intermediate class. So she, she got proficient enough in English for that. And then this year, she dual enrolled in a CNA program that was English, all English with all the medical terminology. She passed it, got her CNA license, and now she's working as a CNA. And so I'm just, I'm just really proud of them. So while I have this stage, I wanted to talk about them. Okay? But that is, that's it for me. Does anybody have any questions?
I appreciated not only the, the data oriented approach to your report, but also the human aspect as well because it, it, it's people, right? The, the 10 people that got their GED and the people enrolled in QCC and these other folks that you're talking about. At the end of the day, it's, it's people, right? And members of our community and our family. So, um, thank you for those updates and congratulations on not only your and your team's accomplishments, but on the many accomplishments of the people that you're impacting with these programs.
Yeah. Can I just say, I'm a baby director. This is my first full school year. So I also just want to say thank y'all because I have a lot of questions. Sometimes I don't know what I don't know and then y'all will tell me, especially Lori. If I don't know anything, I'm just like, I'm gonna email Lori. And then Lori has the answer.
I'm gonna send you her number because she's not gonna be here for much longer. Desiree's got it. I'm only kidding. Great job. And great, great year one.
Thank you.
Ms. Mellon?
I think it would be nice, and I think it's wonderful what they're doing. It would be nice if one or two of them could come here and explain what it means to us, not to everyone, to our community. Um, and you might get more people who say, I could do this.
Yeah.
It's, it always comes from the people who have accomplished it. They're going to appreciate it more. So it's something to think about that maybe if one or two could speak to those people, um, at, at this forum.
Yeah.
To the community about how much it has meant to them. It would be nice.
Yeah, I agree. And I plan to do that in the future. I do. I was speaking to Monique about it. I plan to do that in the future.
Yeah. Oh, that's great. And it takes a lot of courage, you know, for someone who participates in adult ed to come out and say, you know, this is what I needed. This is what I got. And here, here's where I've, you know, I've gone from there. So, so that's great. Yeah. When you were talking about, um, family literacy, it got me thinking about family literacy, right? And, um, the needs of not only our students, but sometimes our families. And wondering how we might be able to just sort of getting our, our thoughts going to the future of some type of way to impact, um, literacy all across the Webster community.
I agree because y'all have the babies, but we have the parents.
Right.
Right. And so we want them to read 10, 20, 30 minutes a night, but it's hard to do that when their parents can't read with them.
Exactly.
So that is actually a goal that like a lot of our students who are parents have is that like, I just want to be able to talk to their teachers. I want to be able to read them stories. And so we try to get them from A to B.
Yeah, that's a beautiful thing.
And I think it's important to bring the library in because I know they have the same mission and initiative. We've had multiple conversations about that, how we can integrate our adult ed program with the library to support our families.
Yeah.
Um, and just, it's just coming up with the method and the program on how we're gonna do that. Um, but it's certainly on our radar, um, to partner with the town and the library to do that.
Yeah, that's great. Well, even the ESOL classes are happening at the library, right?
Yes.
Yeah. And I mean, depending on where folks have grown up, a library might not be a commonplace, like some, on the forefront of their mind of somewhere to go. So just introducing that and, and creating those opportunities, I think is awesome.
Through the chair, um, yeah, I was just thinking too of how to communicate that to the families. Cause like, you know, um, Mrs. Siddiqui said, it's not always, um, the information's not always easily accessible, especially, you know, if they're obtaining their, you know, GEDs and their literacy, you know, thinking about how to, um, get the information out in a way that they can receive it, you know, equitably too, is, is huge.
And I just want to give Ava a shout out because in our multiple discussions, uh, what I love about Ava is that she's always coming to the table with different ideas, trying to think out of the box and do something different. And, and I love that because it's never, I have a problem. It's like, I really want to try this. I think this will meet the needs of my families. And I'm like, run with it. If I can support you, I'll support you. Give it a shot and bring it back. So she's always looking at ways, um, to how can I better meet the needs and reach out and maybe not, maybe they can't come here, but maybe they can go to the library. We can't get them all at night because some of them are at nights. We're gonna have a class during the day. We're gonna do a hybrid because sometimes transportation is a problem. So we're gonna do some online, some in, in class. So it's that creativity that supports the families, um, and works with the families to make them, to help them be successful. Um, so I appreciate that thinking out of the box and that dedication to your program. So nice job.
Thank you.
Well done. Thank you.
That means a lot.
Yeah. Thank you for your updates and for all the great work that y'all are doing.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And the next item on the agenda is the discussion and acceptance of a donation. In this case, it's a donation in the amount of $15,000 from the Janet Malsar Humanities Trust, and that's going to the Bartlett High School Art Department. This is the annual, Mr. Harrington writes this grant.
This is Mr. Harrington, Harrington writing a grant asking for the money. And again, he received it.
Yeah.
Yep.
I will entertain a motion to accept this donation to the Bartlett High School Art Department from the Janet Malsar Humanities Trust as presented.
So moved.
There's a motion in a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. And on behalf of the committee, I would like to, uh, extend my gratitude to the Janet Malsar Humanities Trust for their continued support and generosity of our art program. The next item on the agenda is the approval of surplus items, ready math textbooks and teacher guides.
Yes.
Mrs. Prangeli?
Yes. As you know, we recently approved new curriculum for our math program, K to six. Um, so we are surpassing the additional inventory from our old math program that we will no longer be using.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the committee?
I do.
Ms. Mellon?
Through the chair, what do you do with them?
Um, sometimes the company takes them back or we can offer for the families to take them if they're usable. Uh, we could take them, offer them to the family. Sometimes we offer them to other school districts if they have the program, depending on what kind of shape they're in. Um, if it's student workbooks and stuff, sometimes we just let the kids take them home to use them at home, practice math and save them like that.
I thought maybe, um, another option might be giving them to something, not all of them obviously, but something, some of them to the community center at North Village.
We can look into that.
The student, there, I'm sure there might be some students even during the summer that could use them.
Point, Ms. Mellon? Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to declare surplus items, miscellaneous ready math textbooks from the Webster Middle School and Park Avenue Elementary School, and to direct the superintendent or the business manager to auction off, donate, or otherwise recycle or dispose of these materials in conjunction with the provisions of Mass. General Law 30B.
So moved.
There's a motion in a second. Lori, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the review transfer signing of warrants, bills, payroll, and vouchers.